Today is Monday, July 25th, 2022. We do have a few absences today, but there are three members and that is a quorum, so we can act on items that come before us this evening legally. All right, so first item on the agenda is a public hearing for a special exception application on Heath Road. I will, for all the public hearings tonight, the process will be the same. We will have the town planner introduce the project to us, go over her comments. The applicant will then come up and present the project in its entirety to inform the public of what the project is all about. The board will ask an initial set of questions and then we'll open up the public hearing. Members of the public who want to speak to the application can do so at that time. At the end of the public hearing, the board may then take action on those applications. All right, so again, the first item is a special exception on Heath Road. Brittany Howard, town planner, if you could start us off.
The property owner is North Shore 22 LP and map 76 lot 22, which is the parent parcel. They did apply to the assessing department for address and map and lots, but that is not in our system yet, so for abutters that wanted to look at where the project was going to be, we use the parent parcel. The applicant is requesting permission to fill 4,300, 4,039 square feet of prior to wetlands to build two single-family homes. This project was approved in 2018, but the original applicant did not move forward with the project. This special exception therefore granted by the town has expired. Currently, this property is vacant. The project was before the board on June 13th of this year for a cursory review by the board. The applicant submitted the additional information regarding the vernal pools. Once the board has reviewed the additional submittal and heard public comment, they should review the findings of fact. Under the original submittal, there were two conditions, that there would be no tree-clearing activities from July 1st to July 31st for the northern long-eared bat, and that the applicant provided documentation identifying the 100-foot buffer around the vernal pool number one. The fire department's concern without the turnaround should be kept free of snow, and the conservation commission has reviewed this and they supplied a memo to the board that says the conservation commission reviewed the plans and attended the site walk for lots, but there's 61 Heath Road that was done for the previous approval. Given that this project's already improved, previously we had one comment that the applicant should include the results of the vernal pool survey in the application packet, which was provided. Yep. Oh, and then they currently have their Army Corps permit is still valid, and their DEP permit is also still valid.
All right, so we'll hear from the applicant. The applicant goes to the podium and turns on the mic. Just give us an overview of your application for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, so we're essentially, you know, building a driveway that is about 550 feet long. At the end of the driveway, we'll be building, instead of, I know initially when this was presented at the board, I think the intention was to build two single-family houses of, let's say, 2,000 to 2,500 square foot. Now the intention is to build two small cabins, about 950 to 1,000 square foot. And yeah, that's essentially, you know, in a nutshell, that's a project. It's a driveway with two small cabins. The plan for the cabins has been designed by a Canadian architect. They've built a similar home in Freeport about two years ago, so really nice, you know, high-end, very, you know, that fit well in the nature sort of cabin. The goal is, as I said here, is to really, to clear a limited amount of trees, because that's kind of the goal of the way we're building this. It's very, to be in the nature, it's that, that's the reason why we acquired the lot and why we're building very, very small cabins, so.
So you have submitted the information about the vernal pools as requested, and you've noted that you will add monumentation or markers out on the, on the lots to show where that is for the homeowner's benefit. You also initially, last time, talked about changes you might make to the road, and you're not doing that any longer, you're just going to stick with what is presented here and what we approved previously, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and on the monumentation, I've exchanged a few emails with Brittany. I didn't purchase it yet because I wanted to clarify here what is your, you know, your expectations.
Okay.
Either it's, so it's been already delineated by the surveyor, and I've seen it, I've taken pictures that I've shared with you. They're really far into, as you can see here on the map, different, you know, very difficult to access, but it's, I don't know if you want a metal sign and if you want it 100 feet distance from the vernal pool, or if you want any, a metal sign on, you know, next to the vernal pool, that's kind of the only gray area for me, so whatever you think is best.
No, we want to mark the 100-foot perimeter so that no disturbance happens inside that 100-feet protection boundary, and some kind of permanent mark, so of a metal or wood with a placard or something, but something that will, not just a flagging on a tree that can get pulled down, you know what I mean? So, but yeah, at the 100-foot mark would be where we want that.
Oh, at the, okay.
At the 100 feet.
Perfect, I can, yep.
All right, so I'll let board members ask any initial questions, and then we'll open up the public hearing. Janice?
I think most of my questions have been answered. My only original question was, you know, you and the previous applicant was to make sure that the, you're something, a piece of fence, something to keep people from skidding off that road into the pond. That was my only, everything else you've satisfied, and I thank you very much, totally clear, and I appreciate the fact that you've made changes based on a review.
Yeah, no, and I definitely remember that question, and, and I know, I remember you asked me first, last time I came here, how wide it is, so it's 18-foot.
Yeah.
And what we'll do is, and I don't know the exact words for it, but there's a way we can put a small ramp that protects, and I can send pictures once it's, it's installed.
Yeah, just, just for safety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, it's all my questions, thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Richard?
Yeah, there really haven't been any changes since, since we approved this the last time, so I, and, you know, your presentation was about the same, since you're not going to be making any changes to the road, I don't really have any questions. I want to make sure that you, it's important to us to, to mark that vernal pool boundary so that nothing, nobody does, has, does any activity within, in that area, and other than that, just keep, maintain the two conditions we had the first time, and we can add Janice's condition to be able to, to, for safety purposes, mark off the, the road where it goes close to the pond, and other than that, I'm satisfied.
Thank you. All right, this time we will open up a public hearing. If members of the public want to speak to this application, they can come to the podium and ask their questions or speak their comments. Yep.
Good evening, I'm Carrie Gates, I live directly across the street at 56 Heath from this property, and I just have a couple of questions, I'm sorry, I, this was the first meeting I've got notification about, so I didn't know about the stuff happening before this, but when we talk about wetland and filling in and such on a, I think you said 4,000 square feet, does anybody take into consideration impact of more than just the driveway? I mean, building, and where's the electrical coming in, and where's the, you know, all the other infrastructure for houses on that property? That's going to impact a lot of this property. It's, we're starting with the driveway, right, but it's going to be more than a driveway eventually, and that's a very large wetland area, and I thought we were going towards the direction of having uplands offset wetlands, and is that something, I'm sorry, I don't know for sure on that, but I thought that was something we were leaning towards, and I'm not sure this property has any great amount of upland to do that with, so I'm just curious on that.
Yeah, the application makes a note of their building envelopes, where the buildings are going to be, and they are not in a wetland area. We don't permit, except for some very, I think, very... Yep, yep, so the wetland impacts they are proposing are all from the driveway, which they have legal access, legal rights to access their lot, and so they have to do it in a place that minimizes the impact to the wetlands, and this is the way that they've shown how they can do that, and so that's what we're here to review tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to make that note, that I think there's more than just that section that needs to be taken into consideration. Okay, thank you.
We do, thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this application? Okay, going once, going twice? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Board members have any additional comments or questions? Thank you. All right, with that being said, we will go through the findings of fact and conditions of approval. Town Kennebunk Planning Board Special Exception Findings of Fact. Property owner is North Shore 22 LP. Site location is Heath Road in the suburban residential and shoreline overlay district. Assessor's map 76, lot 22, which is the parent lot. Description of the proposed use is a special exception and permit to fill and grade in the shoreline zone for the installation of a driveway with wetland crossings. The Kennebunk Planning Board has reviewed the above-noted proposal utilizing the following set of approval criteria from Article 7 Special Exceptions of the Kennebunk Zoning Ordinance, and determine that, one, the proposed use will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic on the roads and sidewalks serving the proposed use as determined by the size and condition of such roads and sidewalks, lighting, drainage, intensity of use by both pedestrians and vehicles, and the ability afforded to pedestrians and the operators of motor vehicles. The standard is met. This is driveway serving two house lots. Two, the proposed use will not cause water pollution, sedimentation, erosion, contaminate any water supply, nor reduce the capacity of land to hold water so that a dangerous, aesthetically unpleasant, or unhealthy condition may result. Standard is met. The town engineer has reviewed the erosion control plan and has approved on that. Three, the proposed use will not create unhealthful conditions because of smoke, dust, or other airborne contaminants. The standard is met. Four, the proposed use will not create nuisances to neighboring properties because of odors, fumes, glare, hours of operation, noise, vibration, or fire hazard, or unreasonably restrict access of light and air to neighboring properties. Standard is met. Five, the proposed location for the use has no peculiar physical characteristics due to its size, shape, topography, or soils, which will create or aggravate adverse environmental impacts on surrounding properties. That standard is met. Six, the proposed use has no unusual characteristics atypical of a generic use, which proposed use will depreciate the economic value of surrounding properties. The standard is met. Seven, if located in a shoreline overlay district, the proposed use will, A, not result in damage to spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. Standard is met. B, will conserve shoreline vegetation. Standard is met. C, will conserve visual points of access to waters as viewed from public facilities. It's not applicable. D, will conserve actual points of access to waters. Also not applicable. E, will conserve the town's open space priority areas. Standard is met. F, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. That standard is met. It's not in a floodplain. G, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan in the state historic preservation office. That standard is met. H, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. That standard is met. Eight, if located in a resource protection district, which this is not, so this is not applicable. Nine, if located in the Branch Brook Aquifer Protection District, which this is not, so it's not applicable. Ten, a special exception regarding telecommunications facilities. This is not, so that is also not applicable. Six, the Kennebunk Planning Board has reviewed the above-noted proposal utilizing the following set of approval criteria from Article 10, Sections 3G, roads, driveways, and parking areas of the Kennebunk zoning ordinance, and determine that, one, existing public roads may be expanded within legal right, sorry, legal road right-of-way regardless of its setback from a water body, tributary stream, or wetland. This is not applicable, because this is not a public road that they are dealing with. Two, new roads and driveways are prohibited in the resource protection district except to provide access to permitted uses within the district, or as approved by the planning board upon the finding that no reasonable alternative exists. This is not applicable, this property is not located in the resource protection district. Three, the road and driveway bank shall be no steeper than a slope of two horizontal to one vertical. The standard is met. Four, the road and driveway grade shall be no greater than 10% except for short segments of less than 200 feet. The standard is also met. Five, in order to prevent road and driveway surface drainage from directly entering water bodies, tributary streams, or wetlands, roads and driveways shall be designed, constructed, and maintained to empty into unscarfied buffer strips. Standard is met. Six, ditch relief, cross drainage, culverts. Drainage dips and water turnout shall be installed in a manner effective in diverting, sorry, in directing drainage into unscarfied buffer strips before the flow gains sufficient columnar heat to erode the road, driveway, or ditch. That standard is met. Ditches, culverts, bridges, dips, water turnouts, and other stormwater runoff control installations associated with roads and driveways shall be maintained on a regular basis to assure effective functioning. Standard is met. Based upon the above-noted findings, the Kennebunk Planning Board votes to approve or approve the conditions. We'll review the conditions first. The conditions attached.
You're taking it from here probably, Chris, too?
Yep, thank you.
Do you want me to list that third?
Why don't you list the conditions first?
Yeah, the applicant installing a bollard or short fence suitable to prevent cars from coming off the roadway into the pond.
I were referring to that previous, these two conditions that were on the previous application. Those are the two conditions. So the first condition is no tree clearing activity shall occur between July 1st and July 31st on any given year to minimize the potential effect for north, northern long-eared bats. B, the applicant will prove documentation identifying, well, that condition has been met, so we'll skip that. No, all right, sorry. The condition will be that the applicant installs monumentation or demarcates the 100-foot boundary from the vernal pool on site. And C, the installation of a bollard or fence or other method to help prevent cars from sliding, sliding off the driveway into the pond around that turn. Those are the conditions. Any changes and modifications? Anything else? Is there a motion? Sure.
Oh boy, my first one. I make a motion that the Town of Kennebunk Planning Board accept the special exception findings of fact for North Shore 22 LP, location site road, Heath Road in the suburban residential and shoreline overlay, assessor's map 76, lot 22, for a special exception and permit to fill and grade in the shoreline zone, installation of a driveway with wetlands crossings, with three conditions, three conditions for the conditions of approval as proposed. Did I do it right?
Yep, motion.
The second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? I'll pull the board. Janice Vance, how do you vote?
In favor, yes.
Janice votes aye. Richard Smith?
Aye also.
Richard votes aye, and Chris McClinsey votes aye. Three in favor, none opposed. The application is approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is another public hearing, multi-family project at 44 York Street. Ms. Howard?
This is a multi-family project for 44 York Street, map 54, lot 29. The applicant is proposing 12 units, two triplexes, and three duplexes on 1.36 acres. There's an existing building on site with an office and an apartment. It's in the York Street mixed residential and commercial use. The town engineer reviewed the applicant's responses and gave the board a response memo. Most of the items had been addressed by the applicant. The fire truck turnaround, the applicant is now proposing a connection through York Street with a gate and an OX box. This was sent to the fire department for review. If that property can't be purchased, that's abutting it. The fire department was okay with a cross connection. I did forward that email to the board. The applicant supplied documentation on how they will meet the affordable housing provision of the ordinance for Article 10, Section 12. Conservation Commission had no comments on the application. I also forwarded that email to the board, and it was attached to the memo that went out. The applicant is requesting the following waivers. Parking spaces are obstructed. The applicant is proposing one garage space and one space in front of the garage door. This will require a waiver of zoning Article 10, Section 91. The applicant is proposing more than four dwelling units. If the applicant is proposing more than four dwelling units, the internal road shall be constructed to street design standards zoning Article 10, Section 10C. Article 10, Section 23, design review. The project is being accessed off Day Street. The applicant has provided a narrative discussing the review of this requirement. High-intensity soil mapping zoning Article 11, Section 6B3. They are connecting two sewer with the project. And then driveway with a 24 to 30 feet required. They're proposing 20 feet in the zoning article, that's zoning Article 11, Section 86E. The applicant is proposing a 20-foot perimeter buffer on the site. The ordinance requires a 50-foot perimeter buffer unless the applicant can demonstrate to the board that the site is not able to provide a 50-foot landscape buffer around its entire perimeter due to lot size, topography, or other limiting natural features. Unless the buffer shall be provided, but in no event shall that be less than 20 feet.
Thank you, Brittany. And for the applicant, if you would like to, or if you would please describe your project for the public's benefit. Turn it back on, thank you, thank you.
Jason Vafianis, Atlantic Resource Consultants, here on behalf of Pete and Katie Gay. Pete is actually here with me tonight, in case there's any questions that I can't answer. So yeah, Brittany did a good job recapping all the things that have happened since the last time we were here, but in short, this is a 12-unit, multi-family rental property project. The owner of the, Pete, the owner of the chiropractor, excuse me, chiropractor facility out front, is looking to add this. He already has one rental unit in the unit above, which is currently well below your financial, the affordable housing standard, and we're looking to build some more rental units out back to provide that need for the community. So 12 units, as Brittany said, there are three duplexes and three triplexes. We've worked really hard to sort of, with this density, you know, we're looking for urban infill in the community, and we've, I think we've done a pretty good job getting it, so all the town staff are happy with access, safety, getting in, getting out. We've got a pretty robust landscape plan that we've updated since our last meeting, and I think that's really our last sort of item, I think, that we're wrestling with here is, you know, what can we do for the, for the neighbors and the abutters to, this is a dense development compared to, you know, a single-family lot that might be next door, and we're sensitive to that, and, you know, I've done a lot of these projects in town, and, you know, we're always trying to do the right thing, and I know Pete and Katie are interested in doing that, because they're been members of this community for 18 years and look to be members for, you know, another 18 years and going forward. So with that, I think, any comments or anything, I'm happy to answer, but.
Can you first?
Chris, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
I just got a note that there's a red hood, a pickup truck in the parking lot with their headlights left on, if that is anybody's vehicle. Yeah, I don't know if you want to run down and shut them off, but.
Thank you. Jason, can you tell us what the status is with the turnaround, the fire truck situation?
Sure, yep, so in talking with town staff, that process for purchasing a property from the town can get a little lengthy, I guess, especially because the town, as it was explained to me, the town has a number of these, and that they fear that this will turn into a specific discussion that will go broader, and certainly we don't want to hinge an approval based on a condition that might have, and to be honest, an unlimited timeline. So that being said, the temporary slash permanent fix, permanent if the, the next-door property can't be purchased, is that we will just provide, and we do this all the time, we'll provide a roadway connection that's two parking spaces wide through, so it's, it's, it's greater than 16 feet, which is the NFPA standard for one-way emergency access. We'll put, like, sort of like, probably like a nice wooden gate in there with a landscape. What we do is, I don't know if you know what an OX box is, but it's basically a lockbox with a key in it. There'll be a gate, there'll be a gate key on there. Fire department has the master key to all the OX boxes, they just open it, open the gate, and the same works for plowing, too, so you can go grab the key if you're plowing, plow through, make sure there's no snow stuck in there, so that's really the, everything's kept on-site, there's no need for added conditions or anything, and it's, it works for staff and, and for the applicant.
So are you, will you continue to try to acquire that, or you're just gonna?
Yes, my understanding is they've started that process.
Okay.
They've initiated it with the town.
Got it. And if that does, Brittany, that, and they change the turnaround to that, will that, that doesn't need to come back to us, or would that?
If the board approves the plan as shown, with that turnaround, potential turnaround, it doesn't need to go back to the board to be built. If they showed it with just a cross connection and no possible turnaround on that property, then it would have to come before the board.
So, okay, right now, right now, the plan doesn't show anything on that abutting property. It does have a... It does have a small, two, looks like parking spot, right? Is that, that, those aren't going to be parking, those are, that's gonna be?
Right, so that's not for parking, that's actually for, like, delivery vehicles.
Yep.
So UPS truck, FedEx truck, and even an ambulance, so what we call, that's an SU-30 turnaround, so SU-30 being a 30-foot-long vehicle.
Okay.
Bumper to bumper, so. And also, if someone drove in, like a visitor, and there was no parking in the visitor spaces, they'd have, they'd actually be able to turn around without going in anyone's driveway.
Yeah. Is that gonna be, is that gonna be marked? No parking?
Yes, we put a no parking sign in front of that.
All right.
And, and, so this is a rental thing, too, so the, it will be maintained by my client. They see someone parked there, I mean, they work here five days a week out there, so.
Yeah.
Take care of that.
All right. Questions, Jess?
Couple of small things. Jason, I noticed, I think you made the driveway change and all the copies of the plans except the landscape plan.
Right, because that-
Yeah, so it seems like it's gonna change your total number of plants and what you're gonna do there, so.
Yep, so we just move, move to tree, we'll, we'll send you an updated plan. We aren't gonna take any plantings out, we'll, we'll, we'll probably re-line them, and then we'll show that gate there, and the, and the gate can even be like a, like a six-foot-high fence, you know, gate. It doesn't have to be like a, like you see, like, a gate on the side of the road, it can actually be like a buffered gate as well, so. And the landscape architect knows that, it's just that that doesn't come from my office, so we made the changes, and then he has to incorporate it in his, his final plan.
Okay, and I had last time about, asked about that golden chain tree you had specified, and I, you know, it's not a native tree, and I was just wondering if you could replace it with something native, like a maple or a?
Yeah, did, I noticed, did he leave one in, is that, because I was looking at that before the meeting, so, but I'll tell him to take that out. I, I, I don't, he did get the message, but.
Yeah, that's, I figured it was probably, you still had to mess with that whole plan.
Yeah.
And one question about the sidewalks adjacent to the actual buildings. I can see that this, across the street, that deeper line that you have, I guess delineates, like, the curb up to the sidewalk.
Yes.
But I didn't notice a similar little elevation on the sidewalk in front of the houses. Is it gonna be the same level as the?
They'll be flush. They'll be flush with the surface.
They will be flush.
Yeah, and that's because there's no, the, there's no vehicle, there's no pedestrian-vehicle conflict there, there, you're driving into the parking lot, so it's the same with, like, if you have a walkway halfway up your driveway to go, those are always, you don't have to curb that, that's.
Okay, got it. All right, just want to make sure. I think that's my only ones, and I see your explanation about the affordable. Just out of curiosity, and you don't have to give me a hard number, there's a lot of discussion, you know, people are really concerned about the lack of, of rental units. If you could ballpark it, the market rent rate for the non-affordable units, do you have any idea what it might be in range of?
So I'll have to kick that to my client, but I, I do, I can tell you that it, as you know, construction costs right now are, are, are hard to pin down. So, I don't, Pete, do you want to talk about that for a little bit?
Sure.
We're not gonna hold you to it, so, but there's a lot of interest in the subject, so.
Sure, certainly, there's a lot of interest in that. The only thing is, this project has kind of gone on much longer than expected, so not surprisingly, the costs have gone up, so it really depends, we are trying to cost-save in other areas as well. Obviously, we have to make it work to be able to, to cover the expense of doing this project, but I couldn't tell you, it's changed so much, I couldn't tell you hard numbers, honestly. But we are doing our best, even our apartment, the apartment that I have up there, I have long-term tenants, I, whenever I've had a tenant up there, they've been up there for many, many years, they don't leave. I don't really raise their rent, I don't know if that matters to you, unless we have a huge tax shift. That one's well below. I don't know that, these aren't gonna be that, but I don't raise the rent just because the market's up, more to cover costs. So a lot of it's gonna hinge on what the costs are.
Yeah.
So I don't know if I answered that to your satisfaction, but-
No, I mean, you can't, and I, and I-
It's really impossible to-
I just wanted to get that out there, because, you know, so many people do ask, and there's a lot involved in setting costs, you know, setting rates, so.
Sure.
I just want everyone to understand, you know, where you're coming from and-
If I may say, looking at current comparisons in the area, it will not be above that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I mean, again, depending on the cost, but it shouldn't be above that.
All right, thanks for being willing to answer that question. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Janice. Richard?
Yeah. Hi, Jason.
Richard?
If, when, when you put, when you take out two park, you're effectively taking out two parking spaces from the chiropractor end of the business here. Is that still gonna leave you enough spaces for the apartment and business?
Yes, I knew you were gonna ask that.
How did you, I didn't know I was gonna ask that.
I, I put a, so there's a chart on the new C-101 plan, so the previous approval back in 2005, maybe, they had an actually extra seven parking spaces, I think, and so we, we looked at the code again, and nothing has changed on that. It's one space for 250 square feet of professional office area, or, so, yeah, so they, they still had an extra seven spaces, so we just took two out, and then now they have an extra five.
And since this is only gonna be used in a case of an emergency, and because it'll be locked through the lock, lockbox system, we really don't have to be concerned about where that traffic will go, because there really will be no additional traffic coming through that way, correct?
No, no pass-through traffic whatsoever.
Okay. Affordable housing, you're gonna give us three affordable housing units, correct? If I, if I go into these buildings, how am I gonna? What will be the difference between looking at an affordable housing unit in one of these buildings and a market-rate unit?
In terms of construction, there will be no difference. These are modulators, so they're, they're all coming in with the same. Actually, I probably shouldn't say that for Pete. I mean, it may be that the, the, the affordable units to make it wor, would have, you know, instead of quarrying counters, granted, you know, what, it may be like very small changes in that, but I don't even think Pete might want to come up and talk about that, I don't even think that-
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that. And the reason is, because I think as we, the discussion of affordable housing continues to grow and boil up, we, I think we all want to get our hands and minds around-
Right.
What, what is affordable housing gonna look like in Kennebunk? And since you're here on the, on the, the front lines of this, the-
Sure.
I'd like to hear.
As far as what's gonna be different in those units?
Mm-hmm.
Virtually noth, really nothing, not even the countertops, like you said. Some of these units are gonna be triplexes, I mean, we have to see how it lays out. We might say, okay, maybe the duplex is a little bit more desirable to some, and we'd make the center, but it would be the same, have the same living space, the same amenities, no less quality construction, same deck, everything.
Okay, that's kind of what I, I wanted to get an understanding of what your, the concept would be.
They're not gonna be built any, to any less of a standard, though.
I think that's, to me, that's an important, important issue.
One correction for Jason, I've been here 28 years, not 18.
Oh.
I'm old.
I'm sorry, you've been what?
I've been here 28 years.
Ah, good.
In that, in that space, since-
It still doesn't qualify you as a native.
No.
My mother lived here 40 years, and she was never a native.
But I'm also not leaving.
Thank you for, thank, thank, I think that was, that's an important question to try to understand, where, where affordable housing is going, and since this is one of the early ones, it's nice to get a feel for what you, what you're gonna do. So you're, you're gonna leave, the plan is gonna look like this, that we just got, as far as the, you're gonna, you're creating kind of a, a way to get over to the land that the town owns, but at this point, you're, you're not going forward with that at all? And unless something changes?
It's an interesting question. So I don't like showing anything on a plan where we don't, I mean, I think it's illegal, it's a lib, not a liability, like a legal question. I don't know that it's a good idea for me to show on one of my plans, development on a lot that we don't own, even if it's noted, and, and, and so, so in the case of, if they are successful at getting it, that might even be a staff review to add 600 square feet of pavement, so it would come, it would go through a notification process with the town and everything. Or where we're adding to a site plan, it might have to come to the full board for amendment, but it would just be a simple site amendment with no structure, just, just, just the-
They could do a plan revision, similar to what you're seeing later this evening.
Would, would, if, if you happen to acquire that before you finish construction, would that change you adding the?
We'd probably come back and bend the plan, yeah.
You would take out the gate?
Because that would be preferable, I think, to, to everybody, to sort of, to, so from land, sea, and air, it doesn't look connected, but right now, we have to show that, no connection.
Okay. Yeah, OX boxes look, work pretty well, but they're not perfect, and.
Yeah, and the, the discussion, you know, I had with the chief is, they're not using it in an emergency, in an emergency, they drive in, they do what they have to do, and then-
They'll drive through it, is what they'll do.
And then NFPA is a hun, you can, you can requi, they can't require us to give them a turnaround if it's 100 feet or less, this is 180 feet, so it's, you know, depending on what unit he is, he just back out, or if he's, to be honest with you, most of the time, they're just gonna back out instead of messing with the box, but it's good to have that option.
There was another thing you were gonna discuss, and I've forgotten it.
From last meeting?
Yes.
So I, I think the, you were, you were concerned, and rightly so, and to the point that we sent the landscape architect out a second time to really look at how we can buffer.
That's what you, that's right.
Yeah.
And what you were gonna do is, is come, because my concern is, we have standards, and it's a 50-foot buffer, and it seems like everybody that brings these plans to us, all of a sudden can't do 50-foot buffers, so I want them to explain why, not just, it, it's not something that we ought to be able to, we ought to grant just because somebody asked for it, that there needs to be a reason for it.
Yep, so.
So that's what I'd ask for you to explain.
Yeah, and that, so that, there's the narrative for that, that you have, and so I, I think you recall when we went back, and if we held the 50-foot buffer, there wasn't even a building envelope, so we know, okay, 50's not gonna work, you can reduce down to 20, you know, and, and why doesn't 25 work, why doesn't 30 work, you know, that type of thing, so if, these units, which are specifically designed, I think, to be, to meet this affordable market, but in a tasteful way, and, and it's not my area of expertise, but, you know, Pete, Katie, and I have worked a lot, for some reason, they think I have a good aesthetic view on things, so, I mean, we've worked hard to get these units, you know, where they need to be, I think, in the price range that they can be, and we just, we just need it down to 20, because I can't, we're already got a 20-foot road instead of a, you know, I could have moved, we could have moved the setback to 25, and I would have asked for an 18-foot road with no sidewalk, and that just, that's not gonna work. I think we've, we've hit the right number of things to make it the best project possible on this lot, and that, and it's just with a 20-foot buffer, and whether that means, you know, we need to add specific areas of eight-foot fence on the property line as well as plantings to, to buffer that, you know, and like I said, we were out there, and it's really hard to tell what it's gonna be until the trees are gone, and to the point where I was even considering a condition where we have town staff out there after the trees are down to really assess, you know, what that impact is, you know, when, when that tree cover comes down, you know, and the, we're certainly gonna hand place, field place, the plantings, you know, where we show them on the plan, I'd be like, well, there's a lot of buffer on the other side of the property, this'll work better over here, you know, sort of cluster them like that.
I, I think we, we need to get fairly mature plantings.
Oh, yeah.
Because we've got two people with single-family homes-
Yeah.
That are pretty close to, to the lot line, and they've been there, and they have a right to, to be protected.
And I think I told them, you know, anything's gotta be minimum six foot, so, you know, your, your coniferous trees, they gotta be six foot, six foot or high, and they might even be eight feet, six foot or higher.
And it, it may, you may be right, that once the, all the trees go, a combination of fence and, fencing and trees.
Yeah.
Although I, I always think trees are a better solution for the long run, but.
Yeah, it's, you know, typically usually in trees, trees that aren't in a line, but that, you know, that they're, what we call, you know, we zigzag them, because it lets them fill in-
Right.
But not crowd each other, and then you get the, you know, aubrevities, you know, you get the den one in the middle, and then they all go, so I think, you know, we've, we've actually, I think I've spent more time on landscape on this than I have engineering, which is, you know, which is, probably goes to show you, like, what, what the issue on this lot is, so. And certainly, I think, you know, during the public hearing process, there may be ideas that come up that we haven't thought of yet, so.
Then I'll be quiet, and maybe we'll move to the, the public hearing process. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard. And can you just address the lighting again on the back decks?
Yep. So I had a conversation with the, the lighting designer, and so, the interesting thing about, so these are post-construction installation light, so it's probably, I think it's code to have a light over a door, right? So these are gonna be, you know, your standard, these aren't floodlights, like you see on some people's garages sometimes that are motion-censored, these are your standard 60-watt, you replace the light bulbs with the ones you buy at the grocery store, lights. Don't think that there's really gonna be any, they're gonna, that they're, their one-foot candle cast is usually eight feet, so after, you know, eight feet, which would basically cover the deck, then they just, you know, it kind of filters out. So we're thinking they're gonna be fine, and that's another thing, that maybe it's a, it's a field adjustment, because they do sell these, I found these interesting models that, that they're using up in Falmouth on an apartment project where, so if you put a post, like, on the corner of the deck, like, on the outer part of the deck, they actually sell these attachments that go on top with a light inside, and it shines back on the deck from the post, I know you've seen them, they have different colored light bulbs, kind of like a party feature. So, you know, that, that's an option as well, and we, we just, you know, we just don't, my professional opinion is that it's probably not gonna be an issue, you're not really gonna, it's gonna be like anyone else's light that's over on their house next door, that, you know, you can, it's a light there, but it's not shining into your window or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you. And my other comments have been addressed, so at this point, we will open up the public hearing. If members of the public have questions or comments about this project, please come forward and tell us your name, and we'll hear your, we'll hear your comments.
Yeah, Ken Thornton, 42 York Street, right next door. Just want to get a clarification, because the plan I have, this is the first notification I've had since the project was introduced about a year ago, and the plan I have in front of me is dated in March 21, and it's changed from what I saw it. I, in my opinion, it, it seems of a bit of an overcrowding situation, the planning board knows better than I do about that, but I was uncomfortable with the units. The only positive thing I see in the new change is that there is one duplex that was gonna be right over by my property, but now it's folded back over on this side, so if you could give me a little assurance about what I'm gonna have, because obviously, my privacy's gonna get compromised here, so tell me what's going on as far as the other of the buildings, or you're gonna use the-
You have to talk to the mic.
Just talk to the mic.
Oh, because you're recording, yes, thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so I'd like to know exactly, you know, how much, how many feet am I getting from the road to my property line? How tall are the buildings? What trees will remain? You know, is my, you know, line of sight now being compromised, where I'm just looking out my backyard and I see buildings? Explain to me what I'm gonna see from my backyard. I think, I'd like an answer, you know, to my direct questions.
You'll get, you'll get an answer, the question is just at the beginning or at the end, and usually, it's not a back-and-forth with the, so if you could just list out your concerns, and he will address them after you're done. No, so if you have more concerns, that's fine, if that's your question, he, he will address them, so I'm just, we will get to them, I just wanna-
I'll just ask the planning board, are they comfortable with this many units and this restricted square footage?
It does-
It seems like an overcrowding situation to me, which, you know, it's controversial as far as the sociological problems that come with overcrowding like that. You know, and obviously, I'm very concerned about the privacy, being right next door.
Okay. All right. Any other public comments?
Did you hear my name, by the way?
Yep, Ken Bolstridge, should we see you? Yep, you're- Yep, Ken Bolstridge, should we see you, yep, you're a butter on York Street. We got it, thank you.
Hi, folks, my name is Jeff Pettit, I live at fourteen Hall Street, right on the corner on the other side. I've been here for thirty, probably plus years now, and I do have very similar concerns that Mr. Thorpe has. First and foremost, the elevation of the property in regards to my property puts all of those decks in my bedroom window. So no matter how you look at it, the elevation is very significant, and the backyard to that, you know, I can stand up there and look at it. Every one of the lights that goes there, and Dr. Gay, I appreciate what you're doing here, but I, every one of the lighting systems that is going to be engaged on the porches will also be an issue. I see that, very much so, I, we've had a very, very private area for the time that we've been there, honestly. And I appreciate that, I appreciate the fact that we have wildlife all over the place, birds, we have fox, we have, you know, skunks, whatever you want, but they live in that woodlot. So we do enjoy that. My backyard is my solace. I've been thirty-plus years in the medical community, when I would walk out of my job, I would come home, and I'd be able to sit there and wind down and enjoy that. What I see happening here is the same complaint that Mr. Thorpe had, and that I think that the area is being over, overutilized for the environment that we have. We initially started with duplexes, now we have triplexes in the mix, which is going to create a wall for anybody on Hall Street. The other properties aren't necessarily a budding, but as soon as the trees come down, it's gonna be a wide-open space. In regard to the trees, we also have a constant north wind that comes through there in the winter, and I've lost trees because of that wind in the past, and I just had to do some clearing to protect my house from existing foresting. As soon as we remove the bulk of the forest in that area, it's going to change the ability of these tall oaks to stay where they're at. They're gonna be taking a lot of wind coming out of there through that winter period of time and/or the spring storms. Now, so those are some concerns that I have. The plantings, bravo zulu, I'm Navy, and I think they're great, however, they need to be more mature. That stretch right in my backyard, six foot, is, I can see over six foot, you know, and maybe a fence in that, just that one section would be something to consider, but it's, it's definitely a, something that causes angst for me every day now. And I, I would like to think that that consideration will be made, you know, thanks for the opportunity to say something about it. I wanna be a good neighbor, I don't want, you know, that to be an issue, and I think that the thoughtfulness that you've had up to this point has been very significant, and once again, congratulations in that regard. Mr. Thorpe and myself, we both have had this privacy for a long time. When you overutilize the space and have those units in, initially, that was coming in as affordable housing, and now we find that out of twelve, that only three of them are gonna be affordable housing. What are we trying to accomplish? So I, I really don't have anything else, if you, you know, can throw some information back at me or help me out here. After, yeah, I'll be here, so, okay? Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this application? Go ahead.
Sure. My name is Deborah Perry, I live right across the street at thirty-seven. I have concerns about the emergency exit onto Route One. The last session, the last session, it was said that there would not be access to Route One.
Yep.
Is this a requirement by the police department?
The fire department has requirements of how they turn around, they need a turnaround or a pass-through.
So the turnaround, they need that exit?
Yeah, so it would only be used for the fire department to leave.
But then he mentioned, uh, snowplow, that's a concern, because that puts a different, that puts more traffic.
Well, the snowplow has to maintain that access in case there is a fire, you gotta keep it plowed or else.
So this is a requirement now of complexes like this, or?
Yeah, they all need to have a way for the fire apparatus to turn around.
To turn around, but so, so why the, um, the, the exit? I'm not sure, you know, the two spaces you needed, but I'm not sure why, you know, I don't see that in other complexes where there's an actual, you know, exit.
They probably have enough room to turn around a fire truck on, on site, in that, this is a narrow lot, so they don't have.
Could you show me where it is, actually?
We'll have him show you when, when we're, at the end, we'll have him show you that.
So that's a definite, it definitely has to be there, and it's gonna be locked?
It's locked, yep, and the, yes, it's locked, and only the fire department or the, the maintenance to maintain that access will have access to the key. So it's not for residents that come in through, or public to come through, or anything like that.
That's what I would be worried about eventually, that now it's open, and.
No, that's, that's not the, we understand that concern, and it's, it's not gonna be a pass-through street.
Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Stephen Horn, I live at forty-one York Street, across the street. I didn't know about this project till a couple days ago, so I had no idea what was going on, but I'm really concerned. I've been here thirty years, and I'm not a Mainer, so I, I come from city living. I moved to Kennybunk because it's a town, and a town is something different than a city. And I think that what I really feel strongly about is this overcrowding. Twelve units in such a small space is, is scary to me, because there's a lot, a lot of things that can happen. It seems nice as we start out, but as it goes along, you don't know what's gonna happen, you have a very crowded situation in that area. The second thing is property values, I mean, I bought my property because I wanted to do something with it that would be significant. And I don't want my property value to go down, because we're building a lot of low-cost units, or, or having crowded units in, in, in spaces around the town. We don't, we don't have a big town, and York Street is the premier street, so I don't wanna have York Street diminished in terms of its value. The other thing is the ambiance of our town, I mean, this is Kennybunk, you know, I'm proud to live in Kennybunk. It's a beautiful town, it's the nicest town in all of Maine, and I think we have to be careful about that. We just can't take a, a lot that's there and just put something on, because the lot's there. That might be in my, in, in thought, a good use of space, but you have to look at the overall picture. Are we gonna lose our personality, and are we gonna lose the ambiance of this town? And I'm concerned about that, I didn't know about this project beforehand, or else I would've come and I would've objected to it before. I'm also concerned about safety, you have a lot of units, you have a small space, and, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? If there, there is something that goes, goes awry, it's, it's a small space and it's crowded, I've come from a city. It's not good, cities are not good now, and they're getting worse. I don't want that to happen to this town, and I'm concerned about that. I would be more concerned if I was up, abutting the space, I hear the, the, the concerns about the neighbors abutting the space. I wouldn't want the lights in my window either, and I don't want somebody looking over my deck when I'm going to relax. So I don't have that problem, but I visualize that problem for the other residents that live right next to it and, and abut it. And that, that's a concern to me, I, I'm more concerned about the overall sense of what we're doing, and, you know, getting into a situation where this gets away from us. And if we build this project here, then there's another space down the road, and if somebody puts six units there, another five units over here, we're gonna have a, a situation nobody's gonna be happy with. So I wanted to voice my opinion about that, that we really, you, you're, you're the planners, you know, you're the ones who are gonna have what this town looks like going forward, so that's a significant responsibility. And I wanted to make sure you take into mind, you know, what's happening to the ambiance, the look, and the, uh, the character of, of Kennybunk. It's a very, very special town, and I would like to keep it that way.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
I'll just add in one more question. So right, the whole time, I've, I've seen nothing but twelve units, I'm wondering, has eight units been considered? Has ten units been considered in the cost-effectiveness of that option, rather than always trying to promote twelve? So if you could answer that question, that'd be helpful, I'd love to see it be eight, not twelve.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll, Jason, if you wanna address some of those comments, we'll leave the public hearing open for, for now.
Sure, I'll start in the order they came in.
Yep.
So Mr. Thornton, yeah, so your structure, sir. Everyone can see. This is your lot right here, I believe, and on the updated plan, I'll actually show, uh, structures on the, so we can see where the house is. So the existing trees that are in this corner, we're gonna leave, and there's a couple pretty nice ones, there's a nice oak in there, and there's a few other ones, and we're buffering the planting up within there. We're gonna take a couple of these trees here that were part of this, where the gate's gonna go, and we're gonna put them over in this area. So you should, of, of all abutters, you're probably gonna be the least affected as far as that, because then there's parking area, and that's something that, I may even suggest that we do a little site walk with the two of you, and I'll bring my, my level, and we'll actually be able to, like, tie balloons or something on there, that, we'll get a sense of what that is. So that would be it, but I think you've got at least sixty or seventy feet before we even take down a tree from the, from your house. And Mr. Pettit, uh, yes, so certainly, we, we, we talked with you on the site walk, and, and I believe you talked with one of my employees who was out there doing things, we, you've always sort of been like the primary, uh, design factor in this, and so I definitely think, you know, switching to those light units that shine away from your, your property are gonna help you quite a bit. I mean, I've even seen, oops, uh, sometimes on, on the decks for privacy, they actually build like a six or seven-foot, uh, like, on top of the three-foot railing, they put like a privacy screen, which is, you know, either shadow box fencing or something like that. I think that's probably gonna help you there, uh, we certainly can discuss that after. And then, yeah, then maybe even a fence on your property line, you know, with, with the taller trees built in, and I think, I think we can get something that will preserve your privacy, where people can't look down into your backyard, and, and those types of things. Can help you with the wind, we'll certainly, yeah, well.
That's a big consideration there, because it really blows through your.
Yep, and in some sense, the structure will, the structure, the actual physical structures will break that up, so, and then it may even, I, I wonder if it might, it might buffer you a little bit, but certainly, uh, that's something that, we'll try to pick a day when there's a north wind, we'll go out there and take a look at that, uh, coming through. And a fence, and then, so the fire exit comment, yeah, that's, that's not ever gonna be in use, it's only in the rare case that a fire truck has to go in there, and then to pull out, he may open the fence and drive out, no cars will ever use that, that access. And the, sort of the larger comments about, uh, Kettabunk and density, I'm not sure I'm really the person to answer those, I think that that's a, you know, a, a comprehensive plan, sort of discussion that goes on. Certainly, we work within the ordinance, and, um, we're sensitive to sort of all, you know, opinions in the community. And the question about, uh, unit count, so we did actually look at that. And the, the fact is, with the cost of construction, that eleven units don't work, it's that twelfth unit, really, that, that makes this a, a project that can even be done, so I think if, you know, if you were to go to my client and say, you know, this is great, you just gotta get rid of two units, he may not proceed, he just would say, well, look, it's, it's just, it can't be done, and then you have to go back to the drawing board. So we did look at that, uh, it's just, the, the finance, the financial component of it is, it just doesn't work.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. I guess to, to address the concerns about perhaps the, the density of this lot, and kind of what the town is thinking in terms of development in this area. I mean, it's been talked about in the comprehensive plan, we've had recent changes to zoning to encourage even more infill development in our town centers, in, in the area of town where infrastructure already is sewer, water. If you've noticed, there's, there's really a demand for housing, a demand for rental housing, a demand for affordable housing. All that is stuff that we need to consider, and we've been looking for places in town to encourage that, and it makes sense to have that type of development closer to our downtown centers, where development is already happening, and where the infrastructure can support it, versus having it out in farmland where there's no services, and it's, um, it's harder to get to. So that's what the comprehensive plan has in, has envisioned, that is what the zoning ordinance is geared toward, and that is the charge that we have been, um, given to, to work with. And so there are, uh, in our zoning, there are, uh, standards and, and, uh, what do I wanna say, bonuses for including affordable housing, and that's kind of why this got as dense as it is, because they're adding affordable units to it, which allows them to get a couple extra units to make the project happen. So, um, again, we all know how, how tight the market has been, and I know it's a change, particularly for the abutters, and I don't know, you know, we are, we certainly are aware of that, and, and it is our biggest concerns when we review these projects, to make sure that those, that those who live next to these, uh, new projects are, are, are thought about, and, and we are conscientious about how these impact, um, and you, so. Anybody else care to, try me?
I could talk on this for hours, but I won't. I was on the comprehensive plan committee that recently updated our comprehensive plan, and since the first one began in nineteen ninety-one, we have essentially stayed with the same basic scenario, which is to concentrate growth in the villages, keep away from it in the rural areas, and then have transition areas between the villages and the rural areas. We have stuck with that, you know, um, we are also under, I don't know how many of you guys have, keep up with what the state regulations and legislature does, but the state legislature recently enacted a bill called LD two thousand and three, which mandates all towns in Maine to greatly increase density in housing, because the state is very concerned about the fact that there's not enough housing for people who work in towns, who are firefighters, teachers, people we need in our towns but don't make a lot of money. I would encourage you all to just Google LD two thousand and three and review the legislation for yourself. We, as a town, have not yet tackled any red legislation changes that the state is mandating all towns to do, and there's a deadline of sometime in two thousand and twenty-three for us to complete that project. So when we get closer, I would imagine we will be having more meetings, and there has been at least one meeting at the, the Waterhouse Center so far about housing here, and well-attended, and I would encourage all of you, you know, to stay on top of what towns are required to do, was we're, we're doing a balancing act here. in protecting our natural resources and yet providing housing. And as Chris mentioned, we really try hard to make projects fit into a neighborhood and spare the people who live near it any adverse effects. So that's anything I could really say about it. You know, we're happy to answer any questions. But please take a look at our comprehensive plan. It's posted on the town website in all 200 and some page glory. So, but we put a lot of work into that. That was about a six-year project. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Janice covered that pretty well. My personal belief is that this is a pretty dense project for that piece of property. But it fits the zoning that we have. And it is, and this dense zoning, as Janice, both Janice and Chris mentioned, is what we are attempting to do for the, for the down, for the core area of the town where the sewer and the water is. At some point, my opinion is this is all going to hit the fan, because as Janice alluded, to the law that was passed by our legislature, I find a great many flaws with that, with that plan that they've enacted. One of them being that somebody in their infinite wisdom thinks that the town of Fort Kent is exactly the same as the town of Kennybunk, is the same as the city of Portland, is the same as the city of Bar Mills. And it isn't. And my feeling is, once towns begin to dig into this, that we're going to need citizens to come and talk about this so that we can try and make some sense of that. Do we need more affordable housing than we have? Yeah, we do, as a state. But my personal feeling is that a one-size-fits-all solution from Fort Kent to Kittery is about as dumb a thing as I've ever heard. So we're going to need citizens, like the gentleman, I don't remember which one of you it was, who stood up and said that he didn't, he thought it was too much density. Well, we'll need people like that gentleman to talk about it as this comes down the road. Because if you look at that, that plan, that legislation, this may not be dense going forward.
Just to add to that, Richard, so under LD 2003, the allow density on this lot, because it fits all the requirements, would be 250% of what we're presenting right now, which would be 30 units, something like that, yeah, 30 units. So you have a 30, 30, and there comes a question of, we're dealing with this in multiple towns. And so you actually can't get that density unless you're building what we call microhousing, micro apartments, you know, 600 square foot flats.
And that's what they envision. And it's certainly, it's what they envision. And as it comes closer to us as a town having to implement some of this legislation and actually implement it on the ground, we need people to come and be active in it. So.
Thank you.
That was a good comment, whichever gentleman made that.
Thank you. That being said, the public hearing is still open. If there are any other questions or comments you'd like to make. Yeah, please. Wait till you get to the mic, thanks.
I usually have a pretty loud voice.
I understand, but we're recording.
I think the concerns about the concentration of the units is very valid, and I appreciate, Janice, what you were saying about the LD 2003 legislation. The issue still becomes, when you concentrate the population into this area, we're going to be increasing by what percentage of people? You know, you're going to have two cars per family typically. You're going to have multiple people in those units. I don't know whether are we thinking family units? You know, like two, three kids? You know, so all of a sudden, we increase the concentration of activity, pardon me. And the public safety component is something that comes to issue with me. The traffic on our street right now has changed in the last two years from a 25 mile an hour zone to a 50 mile an hour zone. And nobody seems to be doing anything about that as far as managing it, okay? The reason I'm saying that is, is that it has become a thoroughfare in that area. Now, we're going to add 24, possibly 24 cars in the extreme. And we're going to add kids with bikes, and we're going to add, you know, people walking, pedestrians. So the safety component is definitely an issue. Concentrate people, you have problems. And there's no other way to look at it. You just have issues that come up that you can't control and you can't anticipate. So in regards to concentration, I think that's something that, you know, that needs to be addressed. It's going to increase the police activity. It's going to increase the ambulance activity. It's going to be public utility activity. All of that's going to increase on a road that, right now, is having trouble supporting the traffic that it has. Hall Street is a cut-through. And I, I've only been there for 30 years, let's say. But in the last two years, I've been almost hit more times than I can count, standing in my own driveway when they come around the corner. So that, that's an issue. So, public safety, folks, thank you.
Thanks. All right, at this point, we will close the public hearing. Board members have any additional comments, questions, concerns? Janice, do you have anything? Do you have any other comments or questions?
No, Chris, I'm done, thank you.
Richard?
Yeah, just one. I agree with the abutters who have talked about the project being dense. But my feeling is that Jason and his team have really done a pretty good job of minimizing how the density will affect the neighborhood, especially if he follows through with the landscaping and the size of the trees that will mitigate, mitigate that problem. If you look at the way the project is laid out, he's really taken the housing and centered it back into the lot as far as he can. And I think with the landscaping on Day Street, that the, the project will not be a sore thumb sticking out. And I think his team has done a very good job of putting this project into, onto that lot and making it fit pretty well into a neighborhood. It's not an easy thing to do, and I think he did it pretty well. So I think that's, those are my, my comments at this point.
Thank you, Richard. Oops, can I just add to that, Richard? So I think what I'd like to do is, if it's okay with the board, is meet Mr. Pettit on site. And I'm actually going to take stakes out, and we're going to drive stakes in for the locations of the bufferings, and then write, you know, eight-foot-tall white pine or whatever. I think that it's going to help us kind of get that sense in, and then maybe look at that fence line. We'll look at your backyard and see what we can do. Because that, ever since the site walk, I think he's always kind of been in my, back of my mind about, have to protect this property, because your backyard is so, so well-appointed and everything.
One other quick thing. We've talked about, they've talked about the oak, big oak trees that are there. If you start taking down all kinds of trees around that, my, one of my concerns would be that once the other trees come down, are the oak trees going to be able to stand alone? And I think you need to talk to an oborist to make sure that those trees are protected and will survive the rest of, you know, taking down the rest of the trees.
Yeah, so certainly.
Because those kind of trees are important to the town.
Certainly at the time of clearing. So you know, we went, we all, I don't know if you noticed, we went out and actually shot every single tree on the property. And the ones that are running on that line, that is actually where that, that slope, that's like the, I call it jokingly, a sand escar. But that's on that, on that southern property line, that's where the slopes start to fall off. So I, I don't, we would obviously need permission from, like, certainly a condition that I think we would just do naturally is as we take those trees down, as we get to that line. Neighbor comes out, says, Jason, I have some real concern about this one. You took, you know, the root system that kind of holds this one in the ground and everything. And then, you know, what do we do from there? If they want us to reach over and grab that, replant it with a, with something, I think that's certainly, you know, that type of thing happens a lot in the field. We sort of work, work our way through it. And so, yeah, I think that that, unless he fires me, Pete sort of wants me there during all the portions of construction, sort of overlook it, so.
Yes. Try it again.
All right. There's a ton of invasive stuff on there. There's bittersweet vines, just figure around. And once you get those off a tree, the tree's going to be a lot healthier. But, you know, I really want to stress the importance of getting rid of the Japanese knotweed, the bittersweet, the barberry, the multiflora rose, the eunomus, I mean, everything that's out there, because that definitely impacts your neighbors. You probably have something popping up in your yard from the stuff that's on this property. So, you know, but I appreciate what Dick is saying about making sure that you keep the integrity of the remaining trees once you're removing all this stuff. It's got to come out of there.
And that's, we're going through, because even in the areas where technically we're not touching, we're taking all that out. So we've, we've got the price in that just, that stuff, I mean, you got to go down two or three feet to get it by the roots. So that'll, that whole line around that parking lot, all that stuff's coming out and, yeah, re-purposed, you know, so.
Thank you.
I would also just mention that unlike a lot of larger projects that we see, this one is going to be owned and managed by somebody who works on site every day. He owns the lot, his business is on that lot. And if there's an issue, you can go knock in his store and talk to him about it. So he has a vested interest in making sure that this looks good to start and it stays nice going through. So I would just keep that in mind as well. It's not some out-of-town, big company property management firm that's managing these, so. Anyway. Brittany, what is our action items on this? To address the waivers?
To address the waivers, and then if it's deemed complete for preliminary review.
Okay, thank you. Applicant has made several waiver requests. So we will address those each. And then what happens is that the board will make a determination whether or not we have enough information to deem this project at the moment complete, a preliminary plan. And then there will be some revisions and some updates, and then it will come back for a final plan approval, at which point it probably is one additional meeting or so, depending if any other issues come up. And that's when we would vote for approval of the project. So there's at least one more meeting. Let's go through the waivers. First one is parking spaces. Would you just, we'll go, you'll make a case for each waiver, and then we will act on it independently, so.
So I believe the first waiver you're looking at is to allow for obstructed parking spaces on the property. And this was both a space issue. So we could have made more pavement and made two spaces for each unit on the outside. But we think in Maine, it's really kind of an important thing to offer covered parking. So each unit does have one garage space. Oddly enough, in your ordinance, it kind of poo-poos that, at least. So we're looking to have one, one garage space and one outside space for each unit.
Okay. Board members have any questions about that waiver request? We have a motion for that waiver request?
I make a motion to accept the waiver requested by Pete and Katie Gay, 44 York Street, Matt 54, Lot 129, for the waiver request to, a waiver of zoning, Article 10, Section 9D1, to permit obstructed parking spaces by allowing one space to be within a garage and one space outside, rather than both outside.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll call the roll. Janice Vance, how do you vote?
Aye.
Janice, aye. Richard Smith?
Short roll tonight.
It is a short roll tonight.
Aye.
Richard Smith votes aye, and Chris McClenge votes aye. So that waiver is granted. The next waiver request looks like the street standards, Article 10, Section 10C.
Yep, so harking back to a lot of the previous discussion we had and sort of previous layouts, multifamily projects typically require 24 to 30-foot road width, which I can say as an engineer who does a lot of work for other municipalities, 30 feet of pavement's a very wide road for residential projects. So we've discussed this. We thought we could get the 24 feet and not need the waiver, but that would push a sidewalk out of the equation or even create more sort of conflict, really more pavement than you need. Cars over the years have gotten smaller, for the most part, and ordinances haven't caught up with that. So a lot of places, you know, a lot, a lot of people, especially now with the price of gas, they're driving, you know, hybrids and preuses. So we, I think we sort of negotiated with the board through that process that a sidewalk and 20 feet of drive width with a curb, so we have a mountable slipform curb separating that sidewalk. So you've got that vertical separation, that also that visual barrier for people driving. And also narrower roads tend to lead to reduced speeds. It's something we push for in a lot of smaller community development projects. So, yeah, we'd like to go with a 20-foot pavement with a four-foot sidewalk versus a 20, 24-foot road.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Right, Janice, so that, there's one on the back, too. So there's zoning Article 11, Section 86E, and then there's the zoning Article 10, Section 10C. I don't know if you want, they're both about street design standards and width. I don't know if you want, the board wants to lump those together or vote on them individually.
So just quote this, what it says here?
Well, so there's the second bullet under Number 5. And then if you flip the page, there's another bullet, but they reference two, it's in the zoning ordinance in two separate locations. So I don't know if you want to just lump that together as one waiver request? I'll leave that up to the, or vote on them individually. I'll leave that up to the board.
We'll vote individually, but we won't have to have another argument presented for it.
I'll just make it short. I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a waiver of zoning Article 10, Section 10C, regarding the construction of internal roads. Section 10C, um, regarding the construction of internal roads to town street design standards.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll call the roll. Janice Vance?
Aye.
Janice votes aye. Richard Smith?
Aye.
Richard Smith votes aye. Chris McLynchy votes aye. That waiver is granted. Why don't you just turn the page, we'll go out of order. Turn the page, in the back of the page, that top bullet.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, okay.
Want to make that motion?
Yeah, same thing. Uh, I make a motion to, um, approve the applicant's request, um, to, for a waiver of the driveway width of 24 to 30 feet requirement in section zoning Article 11, Section 86E, um, with a proposed width of 20 feet.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Aye.
I'll call the roll. Janice Vance?
Aye.
Janice votes aye. Richard Smith?
Aye.
Richard Smith votes aye. Chris McLynchy votes aye. Waiver is granted. All right, and now, um, design review?
Yes, so, this probably was the, the topic most discussed tonight. So we're looking for a waiver, uh, for multi-family projects to have a perimeter buffer of 50 feet reduced to 20 feet. And the reason for that being, this is a, a narrow lot, uh, in a zone that allows for, um, uh, significant density, um, and the 50-foot buffer is unattainable, that actually wouldn't even leave a building envelope for a duplex. So we're asking to reduce down to 20 feet with significant buffering, uh, and fencing, and other items that would help reduce the impact on the butters.
Jason, you jumped ahead. So, design review is the design review criteria for lots with frontage on York Street, with the, the architecturals and the tree plantings and all that, but it's if the project was primarily getting their access off of York Street.
Yep, so, sorry, uh, strike that, move it.
Hold on, we, we can address the one you talked about, which is, um, which is number six on the back here, uh, which is about the, the perimeter strip, the, sorry, the buffer around the side.
Oh, you wanna do that one next?
Yes.
All right.
That's what Jason was addressing. We will act on that waiver. Janice, if you could make a motion-
I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a waiver for the required 50-foot perimeter buffer, um, on the grounds that this project, uh, the amount of square footage allowed to the project would make it not doable at 50 feet.
And reduced to what? The buffer being reduced to-
The buffer being, yeah.
Reduced to 20 feet?
Yeah, to 20 feet, okay. It was, uh, your request to reduce it to 20 feet.
Yes. That's okay. That's the motion.
I, I'll second the motion, I just have a question for Brittany. Why isn't this a dot point under, sec, under number five as the waiver request? And why is it a separate one?
So it's-
It was a mistake, wasn't it?
No, I mean, it's, it's not really, it's not, it's sort, it's not really a specific waiver or specific zoning ordinance, it's under the purview of the board to allow it to go down to the 20 feet. So it's not, I mean, you can vote on it as a waiver request, but it's not-
I see.
Specifically.
That's what we, we are doing, even though it, it's not under the five, you know, the five waiver requests-
We are not waiving the whole requirement of the ordinance. You're allowing them to reduce it. All the other ones, you're waiving the requirement of the ordinance.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so we will amend-
It's just not clearly stated.
Amend the motion to, um, reduce the buffer from 50 feet to 20 feet, based on language, and then you can insert the language from what article we're talking about, or what, right? You guys can insert it.
Do you want to, do it as a, it's not, you're not waiving-
I know we're not waiving it, we're reducing the buffer.
Yes, reducing the buffer, do you, we want the-
Requirement, so.
Should I amend that, the wording for that?
If you'll accept my friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Then that would be great, and Jim can-
So I'll second it with the, with the friendly amendment.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want the-
You can add it, yes, if you have the-
Yeah, it's Article, uh, 10, Section 10, D3.
Be honest, do that again, Jim, or are you okay?
Understood. Reduce the buffer from 50 to 20 feet.
Per Article 10, Section-
Per Article 10, Section 10D3.
Great, thank you. That is the motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Janice Vance?
Aye.
Janice votes aye.
Also aye.
Richard's votes aye, and Chris McLynchy votes aye. Even though, again, we weren't necessarily required to vote on that, we will, for the record. All right, now we'll go back to design review standards.
Yep, so, uh, we're requesting a waiver for the design review standards, because those are properties that front York Street, so it's the York Free, York Street Design Standards. We're providing all access and structures to be, um, accessed off of Day Street. And so, even though the property is addressed 44 York Street, there will be a Day Street designation private way established by the assessing, and then all of our traffic, uh, exits onto Day Street, and therefore not, um, visible from York Street.
Any motion?
I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a waiver of Article 10, Section 23, design review, as the project is being accessed off Day Street, and design review is designed to apply to York Street properties.
That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? I'll call the roll. Janice Vance?
Aye.
Janice votes aye. Richard Smith?
Aye.
Richard Smith votes aye. Chris McLynchy votes aye. That waiver's been granted. Uh, and then a waiver request for high-intensity soil survey.
Yep, uh, we're requesting this waiver for a high-intensity soil survey, because those are typically done in areas where you don't have public utilities. High-intensity soil survey tells you a lot more about the ground, uh, the native soils, than a medium-intensity soil survey does, which was provided. But, uh, that's predominantly so you can do nitrate assessments. There'll be no, um, septic systems or, uh, private wells or anything of that sort. So, we typically seek a waiver in this situation.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request, um, to not indulge in the zoning 11, zoning Article 11, Section 6B3 regarding soil density soil mapping, um, as this project will be certified public utilities.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, I'll call the roll. Janice Vance?
Aye.
Richard Smith?
Aye.
Chris McLynchy, aye. That waiver has been granted, three to zero. Okay, um, does the board feel we have enough, uh, we feel this is a complete application? This is the next motion on the table, I guess, so, uh, I'll have, I'll just make a motion, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay, go ahead then.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm, so I'm just basically saying that the, it's complete. All right. I'd like to make a motion, uh, that the multi-family development proposed by Pete and Katie Gay at 44 York Street, map 54, lot 129, be considered complete, um-
For preliminary review.
I'm sorry?
For preliminary review.
For preliminary review, I knew that was something I was missing, thank you.
Uh, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? I think-
I'd, I'd like to see Jason work hard with the butters, uh, to make sure that the, uh, everybody's as happy as they can be with the, uh, how you're gonna protect their properties.
And we'll get an updated landscape plan for-
Yep, the landscape plan likely would be the only plan updated, other than the title block for signature on the next level.
A motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Janice Vance?
Uh, aye.
Janice votes aye. Richard Smith?
Aye.
Chris McLynchy votes aye. We have granted preliminary plan is complete. We deemed, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you all for coming out.
Yeah, especially thank you all for coming out. It, uh, makes for a much better process when people get involved.
Next item on our agenda is preliminary special exception application on High Street, map 64, lot 1. Brittany?
Uh, the applicant has requested permission to fill 192 square feet of priority 3 wetlands to access upland for a single-family home. The board conducted a site walk on the property, and the applicant has updated the plans per the board's request at the last meeting. Um, those updates were listed in the applicant's letter to the board. If the board deems the application complete, they should set a public hearing date. There were memos from the Conservation Commission and the town engineer. The applicant has reached out to main DOT regarding the student on the approved permit and are waiting for direction on how to proceed. The current permit is for forest management and farming. Um, and the applicant has to apply to the assessing department for an address and map and lot number. The current plan states 167 High Street. This is a number that does have to be assigned by the town. Um, I've been using the 165 as the parent parcel for the project.
Thank you. We'll hear from the applicant.
Yep, so they did some, um, updates per Chris's comments with the, um, radius, thank you.
Okay.
So they brought them here tonight, if the board wants to take a peek at them tonight, um-
This is replacing this whole plan?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Um, can I actually have it, yeah, 'cause I'll go with the board members that aren't here.
Yep.
Hi.
Hello, thank you.
My name is Manon Cody, um, and that's Sylvain Terry, owner of the property. I'm just speaking for him, and he'll help me. Uh, but basically, we were here, um, June 27th before the board as preliminary to split, um, this 7.3 acre lot into two, uh, so proposed lot A and lot B. We had a site walk with all of you guys on July 5th, if I remember well, and we were given a punch list, um, to amend the plan for things that were missing. So, the things that were, um, added on the plan is the, uh, topography has, has been labeled on the wetland plan. The wetland has been labeled as a priority 3, and a 25-foot setback is shown on the plan. Um, the square footage of the wetland disturbance that, uh, for the installation of the pipeline for the leach field on proposed lot A is 38 plus or minus square, square feet. And a note has been added on the plan for the restoration plan of the wetland impact. Uh, the restoration plan for the wetland impact at the 36-foot culvert site has been updated, um, per, you know, the board's requirement after the site walk. I'm just reading the paper that you guys probably all have, but- The driveway and the emergency vehicle turnaround has been depicted on the plan. Now, the, the, um, turnaround, um, after I forwarded everything to Bill at Longview Partners, he, um, no, I, I mean, I, after the engineer, I guess, wanted to see the radius, so that's what was amended on this plan I just gave you. Everything else has stayed the same. Let's see, where was I? Okay, so the proposed well, the well on the lot B has been marked to be located at the corner end of the turnaround, and look, it's located more than 100 feet from the leach fields. The proposed septic tank has been marked and is located behind the proposed dwelling on lot B. Uh, the location of the existing house on lot A has been marked, and the septic and the well also has been marked on there. Main DOT, so updated entrance permit is in progress. I talked to, I sent the, a, a new application last week, and, uh, I wanna say Vance Terrell called me on Thursday and said that he was gonna go look at the, um, the, the flags that Sylvain put up for the new, you know, for the driveway entrance. And I haven't heard back, but he knew that we were here today, so I'm expecting to hear from him very soon, uh, with the new, hopefully, the new permits. So that's in the works, um. The other thing was for if the leach field would be failing on lot A, you guys wanted to see an easement, or, I mean, a, a plan, so an easement for repair of that, um, leach field, um, and that will be addressed by the surveyor, that we have contacted Branch Brook Surveyor to do that, so that will be addressed. I think that's all I have, if you guys have any questions.
I think you also updated the detail on the culvert crossing, right? You added detail that we asked for about the culvert and protecting it, um, when, the riprap and stuff on the ends, so, um, to protect from erosion at the end of the culvert.
Yes, that was added, so they added a, um, the felt, I call it the felt.
Landscape fabric, yep.
Yeah, the fabric. Basically what, um, Bill told me on the phone, he said, he said, you guys, they went overboard by doing the mitigation of the possible erosion there. So, you know, they went with a bigger culvert. They went with everything more than really that it required, because the, as you see, as you saw on the, at the site walk, the, the, the land there where the culvert is going to be installed is pretty, um, flat. It's pretty flat, so, and for four years that Sylvain has owned the land, he was telling me today, he's never seen any, he's never seen any water there, really, draining, right?
Well, there's a very large ditch that then goes, so there's definitely been water there at some point.
There is, but I mean, it's-
There's a very large drainage. Yeah, well, so that's what we're, that's what we're trying to mitigate.
Minimal, I guess, what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Questions? Janice, do you have a-
Thanks for the update. The plan is, um, this has got a lot of stuff. There's one thing I keep missing on this plan, and maybe you can show me where it is. Where is the proposed property line between lot A and lot B? Oh, it's a yellow, okay, all right, 'cause that's why I was missing-
Or the absence, absence of the blue, or the yellow, which is hard to see.
Yeah, the yellow is like fading out, okay, and, um, just, I was just looking at the performance standards for this lot, or this, this zone, 'cause this is the first one that I've dealt with as I've been on the board, um, in, in the Branch Brook zone. So, um, you know, I wanted to go back and check our regulations to refresh my own memory. But I was wondering, um, how far is the house from the property line? In the back, behind the house to the property line?
So the, the proposed house on lot B?
Yeah, I mean, how, you know, are you, 'cause it's, our performance standards call for 50 feet, and I just couldn't tell from the plan how far it was.
You should be able to scale all these plans. It's 60, 60 feet to the inch.
Okay, I guess I gotta got my little ruler out and done it, so, so-
No, you, you measure it, we should, we should be in this, we're, we're meeting the setbacks.
Okay, all right, and-
It could be all scaled out.
So 60 feet to an inch?
So, uh, let's see what else, um. All right, my question was about the DOT permit, you already covered that. Um, and you had seen the Conservation Commission's comments, right?
Yes, I've seen that, and I was a little concerned, uh, and that's one thing that I talked to Bill about, and, and, um, he assured me that, he said, again, you, and Jim, Jim was supposed to be here tonight to speak on our behalf about that, uh, 'cause I, I don't know what I'm talking about, we, I mean, you know, but I don't know what I'm talking about, about, you know, like, uh, what, what you need to do to-
For the conversation, well, that's why we, we shift everything, that we should better weigh up on the other property. the other property, keep everything away from the brook.
But they're concerned about the crossing of the culvert here.
Again, again, Bill went overboard with that. He put a, I think he put a three-foot culvert, which could have been a two-foot. He went overboard with that, so I don't see any problems there.
No, they were, they were concerned about the septic, really.
And that's way up on.
Yeah, so you're.
Further than the first septic.
They were concerned about the crossing of the wetland to get to the leach field is what the Conservation Commission was concerned about.
And we were out there and it's, it's one of the, the planner was out there and he was, this, it's loom, so it's basically just putting a loom back on top where it's gotta belong and there's nothing wet there at this time.
I'm sorry, they say although both are placed in both, meaning like both septic and, and the piping is, sorry. So they're saying, everything is placed in zone B except the access road crosses a wetland that runs into the brook and the pipe from the home to the leach field crosses the wetland as well. Any failure at each of these crossings point could, could lead to contamination of our drinking waters.
The topo says it all, it's all flat there, so I don't see it being.
We, so we've heard their concerns and.
All right, those were my questions, concerns and all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, basically, that, that was, that's my concern with what the Conservation Commission is at a, we're, that's, that's my concern. I want to be made comfortable that the crossing of this wetland to, to the leach field is not gonna cause a problem. So I, I need to be made comfortable for that and I, I think the culvert, the road crossing culvert is something we do quite often and it's, it's got a decent distance from the Branch Brook, so I think we should be fine there, but I am concerned with running a culvert through the wetland for the leach field, to the leach field, sorry.
So at the site walk, I remember, so the wetland that we're going to disturb for that pipeline to be installed is only thirty-eight plus minus square foot. So, and we discussed, you were not, you were not there, you had stayed at the road, but we discussed that it was, we were gonna use like something to put back everything that's the layer that we're gonna remove, we're gonna put everything back the way it was. So it's like, again, it's, I don't see that we're going to disturb that much wetland that's going to interfere with the brook because it's higher up than what we're gonna do for the culvert. And it's narrower, you know, it's less.
And you know, on the site walk, they had asked for a note about how that was gonna be restored and they did supply a note on the plan that it would be restored per M D B permit by rule, section nine standards, so I don't know if that helps the board with that concern.
I assume that means that we're gonna have to do a permit by rule with D O, D O, D E P, right?
I think they were just saying that those are the standards by which.
For the standards, not necessarily have.
You don't need to submit it.
Okay, good.
Not that I know of, but I guess I'll leave that to you.
That's the way I understood it too, but I just want to make sure that.
Because again, it's forested wetland, it's, it's not like cattails there or anything. It's, it's just matter of taking the loom off and then putting the loom back on top and the leaves are gonna fill it back up and nobody's gonna know. It's.
Yep.
The, the concern is, for me anyway, that Branch Brook does supply most of the drinking water for the town of Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port and Wells and that, that makes it a fairly significant watershed. And we, we owe it to do diligence when any kind of disruption is going on in this, in the area. So that's, that's my concern.
Understandable, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you've addressed all the concerns that I, that I saw or had. You added the wetland impact for that sewer, sorry, the forest main, as it were. And anyway, so I'm satisfied there. I guess Chris's comments about not knowing the upstream drainage area regarding adequately sizing of the culvert, I guess, I guess what you guys are saying is that you've upsized the culvert to make sure that regardless of how big that is, it should, it'll handle it, I think is what. But Chris is just, Chris is just commenting, he can't make an evaluation on the sizing because he doesn't know how much, they haven't provided how much the drainage area is, is that?
Correct.
All right.
So when I forwarded this to Bill at Longview Partners, he, the town of Kennebunk engineer memo, the only thing that he saw that he needed, from my end, I mean, from what he understood, I guess, was that he needed to add the radius. Everything else, per his view of things, everything else was good.
Okay.
After talking with Bill, so.
What do we need, we need to say if we have enough information?
To do a public hearing.
To schedule a public hearing. Okay.
I think it would be good if during the public hearing, you did have someone from Longview Partners here to answer the public's questions. Should they have some?
I think so too.
Yeah.
Thank you for being patient with us right away.
Yep, nope, for sure.
We don't expect you to, you know, understand a lot of the engineering, that's why you hire an engineering firm.
But we definitely, I mean, we thought he was gonna be here for something else today and, you know.
We know Jim, he's, he's busy. No, we don't need that. We just need to agree that we have enough information to go forward and I think we do. So we'll schedule a public hearing for, I'm looking at Brittany and she's looking at up something, so I'll wait.
It just says that they should determine a hearing date.
Yep.
That's all it says, doesn't say that it needs to be, said that it's complete, you just need to determine.
Yep. So I don't, I don't see any other information that we're missing. So we will look to schedule a public hearing for.
August twenty-second.
August twenty-second is public hearing scheduled for.
It's a Monday, yep.
It'll be the fourth Monday of August. All right.
If Jim can't come and if Bill can't come, we'll find somebody else.
All right, thank you guys, yep.
Thank you.
Twenty-fourth, I think. Twenty-second, you were right. Yep.
Was hoping you'd hand deliver it.
Probably. Next item on our agenda is preliminary special exception for Port Road, map seventy-nine lot forty. I will wait for the town planner.
This is for map seventy-nine, map seventy-nine lot forty for Port Road. The applicant is requesting permission to fill priority three wetlands to access the uplands for the single-family home in approximately four thousand two hundred and ninety-eight square feet. It's in the suburban residential district and the rural conservation district and the shoreline overlay. The applicant has updated the plans for the birds' request at last meeting. The connection to Port Road has been updated and a note regarding the maintenance of the rock sandwich has been added to the plan. If the board deems the application complete, they should set a public hearing date. The board conducted a site walk on this property on June sixteenth of this year. There's also a member from the Conservation Commission and the town engineer and the applicant will have to apply for any additional permits from D E P and Public Services.
Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Barry.
Good evening. I think Brittany covered most of it already. I can add that we have received, we did put an application into the highway department and we have received approval for that. The D E P process is in process, the application for that is in process through Jim. Jim sends his regards tonight, he's otherwise occupied. Apparently, the cloning was not successful, so, you know, he's somewhere else. The, the addressing the Conservation Commission, yes, those contractor is certified in erosion control and we never intended to use any pesticides on the property, we just picked about a gallon of blueberries, so really we don't want any of that stuff either, anyway. Most of the comments, I think, Chris Hostreiter sent in have been addressed or can be addressed. We have diagrams for the turnaround from the fire department and we always bring the fire department in when we get the rough construction done so they can see and make sure everything works to their satisfaction. That's something that happens during the construction process. The road profile is actually on the plan and it's part of the rock sandwich. It tells you, it tells you the different layers of the roads that's gonna be in there.
Speak up a little bit, we're having a hard time hearing.
The road profile is on the plan. You can see it as part of the rock sandwich. If you take the rock sandwich out visually, you'll see all the, all the rest of the, how the road is constructed, that. Same, same, same thing with the rock sandwich detail. We always use a, a non-woven fabric to allow the water to go through and the size is really gonna depend on what we find when we get it opened up, so. But it's, it's a non-woven fabric, it's always completely overlapped, so there's not, there's no additional place that can, where the water can seep through and the depth of cover on there is gonna be pretty much what you see on the plan, so. The curb cut, item number six he talked about, there is already a stabilized entrance out there. I think those of you who are on the site walk, remember it is a paved curb cut that's already there. And we don't intend to disturb that unless we get into town water going in there. And if that's the case, the, the water will go through that curb cut, won't be taking out any more sidewalk or anything else, then we'll simply repave the curb cut as we go in the driveway.
Your, your radius, I see you mark it here, but that, that, the current curb cut meets those radiuses to get onto Port Road?
Yes, we're going from a twenty-four foot radius to, to a fourteen foot.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the curb cut and I know you, there was a question about it, you have it on the plan, I just want to make sure that the curb cut that exists fits that as well.
It should be sufficient.
Okay.
And that's another one of those items that the fire department will tell us about when they get there, you know, as their equipment changes, you know, the, the radius may need to change as well, but it's always been sufficient so far for what we've used, so. Like I said, if not, they, they will certainly let us know, so.
About the engineers' comments, I see your diagram for the rock sandwich and, but it doesn't have any, it's not labeled about, not like your road profile in terms of how much cover is gonna be above the fabric and, and there's, and the.
The dimensions on the rock sandwich are really dependent on the site when you open it up. You don't really know, you know, we can put anything down that you want, but it may change.
How much fill are you gonna put on top of the, the rock sandwich, I guess?
Pretty much what you see there on the, what it, what it says on the plan.
Well, doesn't.
Eighteen inches, I think, of, or fifteen inches of cover plus that topping.
Yeah, that part, that, it doesn't show on the rock sandwich detail, it may show on the road profile, is that what you're telling me? The rock sandwich has a diagram, but there's no labels about how much cover is on top. Talks about.
That's on, that's on.
Yeah, I'm looking at that diagram.
But this, this is the one, the one on the bottom left is really the one we're looking at for construction purposes.
Yep, I understand.
It labels that as the rock sandwich and then that as the gravel on top.
Okay, thank you.
This diagram on the side here is really for illustrative purposes, just to show you how the rock sandwich is constructed with different layers of stone, sizes of stone and how it's put together and how it's wrapped, so.
Yep. Okay, I was just following up on the Chris's comments, I guess he didn't notice that detail or else you added it after, so that's, I'm clear now as what you're saying, at least eighteen inches of gravel on top of that, so, okay. I understand. Are you following?
Yeah.
Other questions?
We, we had talked about a maintenance schedule on your other property that had the rock sandwich, what was it, every two years? To ma, you know, for maintenance and inspection of the rocks, wasn't it two years or two, or one year?
We're planning on doing it annually.
Okay, annually, because I'd like to make that a condition here.
Either in the spring after the leaves have all fallen, then you go in and make sure that it's relatively clear. That's something that should be done every year.
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily mean that everything gets cleaned out every year, it's an inspection process and to see how it flows and frankly, when we've seen it working, the leaves are all floating on top of the water and then when the water goes down, the leaves go back down on top, on top of the edge of the sandwich, so. But yeah, it's something that you should do every year because you want to make sure it's working properly.
Yeah, okay, I, that's, the question I was just, just to main, you know, have that maintenance schedule in writing when we do the final here, because I think, you know, you've kind of answered most of the questions I have and Chris certainly covered a lot of things that I hadn't even thought of, like the road profile and all, so I think I'm set for now, thank you.
So you were gonna, you're gonna add additional language about the maintenance of the rock sandwich?
You can do that. You want that in a narrative or do you want it on the plan?
I think you already have a statement on here about it will be the responsibility of the users of the driveway to assure maintenance of the rock sandwich drainage system, language to include removal of leaves, debris, et cetera. If you wanted to just add a note that this will, it will be inspected annually or something like that to that existing statement.
I guess we're just, it seems open-ended, that language to include, but where will that language be? And it looks like he's saying you should include it here.
Yeah, I think if you put it on the plan notes, that would be fine.
It just makes it clearer if it's right there for everyone to see.
Exactly, so that would be helpful. Thank you. Anything else, Janice?
That's it, Chris, thank you.
Richard?
No, I, I think this is, clears, clears up the questions that I had. And as long as you're gonna do what the Conservation Commission wanted and the fire department's happy and we've engineered the rock sandwich to, to work, I, I think it's fine.
All right. Yeah, and I guess you'll need to add the, sorry, are you gonna add the radius for the turnaround or you said that was gonna?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Yeah.
We can show you a number on the plan if you want.
Yes, that's.
But again, the determination comes from the fire department and make sure it works for them.
Right, well, they first look at it on the paper and if it has, to evaluate, they need to know what that radius is gonna be. We did, they, Longview just did it for the other applicant and before you, so he knows, Bill knows what's added there. It looks like Chris was also unclear about the culvert and so he couldn't address it because he didn't know what it was draining, not the rock sandwich, the other one, you were.
Well, he's calling it a conveyance device.
Okay.
So a rock sandwich is a conveyance device as is a culvert. So we put the culvert in out at the street, whether, whether the highway department's really gonna, think it's gonna be effective or not is, is a question, it's up to them. The real conveyance device is the rock sandwich in there.
Okay.
And that's not sized until you actually get into the ground and see how big it is. And we also have to wait for the comments to come back from DEP to see if there are any changes in the plan.
Okay. That being said, do we need to have the DEP before the approval before, or comments before we have a public hearing? Or?
Usually they kind of coincide and they've already applied, so, and they have a, when did you apply? Because they have a set timeline that they have to respond back within.
Are there any timelines that are still valid?
Not with them, no.
So, you know, all I can say is the application's in, haven't heard anything back, so.
I mean, if their public hearing, we have space on the twenty-second, that would be outside of their response period from DEP.
You'd think.
Well, that's how, yeah. I mean, if there was anything that needed to be changed, if it was de minimis enough, we could do it as staff. If it was something major, they would have to come back before the board.
Okay. Board members have enough information to set a public hearing?
Yes.
You good? All right, so we'll set a public hearing for this application for August twenty-second. All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, the preliminary subdivision amendment to Home at West Meadow. Brittany?
This is for Mockingbird Lane Homes at Mess Meadow. It's map thirty lots, one sixty-one through one sixty-seven, formerly one seventeen, one fifty-three, and one fifty-four. We put this information for butters because when you go to RGIS, the maps, lots one sixty-one through one sixty-seven, you can't search for them. They're not in GIs yet. The applicant is proposing a revision to an already approved plan to include a drainage easement to lot two and lot three for the benefit of lot one and two. The board reviewed the subdivision in the fall of twenty-twenty-one with an approval date of November nineteenth and a recorded date of December second. Under Article fourteen of the subdivision regulations, minor modification of the approved plan such as moving lot lines, street linements, building, building window configuration, or other minor alterations which do not result in additional lots or dwellings. The board should follow the procedures for final plan approval for a minor subdivision. The applicant is proposing to add a drainage easement, so it falls under this minor subdivision rules. The board should determine if the application is complete for preliminary review and set a public hearing date.
Okay, what is that? Thank you. Floor is yours. Can you turn on, sorry, turn on the mic, it's the bottom of the mic, there you go, you're good.
Good evening, Craig Burgess with Sebago Technics here tonight representing Chinburg Development, who has already started construction of this project. They've encountered soils with high seasonal, high groundwater table. And they would like to construct lots one, two, and three with full foundations. So they'd like an opportunity so that runoff, that, that the groundwater has a place to flow. And so what they're proposing is a ten-foot wide drainage easement along the back of lot two and three. So that the foundation drains for lots one, two, and three can connect into that foundation drain. So it'll be like a foundation header pipe that's laid near level. And it will discharge over in this location approximately over here where the, one of the low spots on the site is. And so those three lots will connect into that foundation drain for that common outlet point around lot three. It really doesn't affect any of the stormwater reports that were previously prepared because it is only, it only, it's only picking up the groundwater. It's not actually affecting surface runoff in any way. So it's just to alleviate the groundwater concerns for the, for the full basements for those three lots.
Can you explain? Sorry. Where the water's going? So what, what? Yeah, you're saying it comes out on lot three, but how does it, is it just, how does it come out? What do you deal, where does the water go?
So there's the low spot that was, that, as part of the stormwater management report that was originally prepared for this project. One of the study points is right in this area and there's a detention basin right around this area too. So there's, that's a, a natural low area. So what Chinburg is trying to do is find where that low area is so that there can be a foundation drain installed within the ground that can discharge. So that it can be all directed that way through a gravity pipe.
Is it being directed into that detention basin?
No, it is not.
No, so it comes to the surface somewhere on lot three?
Yes, it just, and that's something that we haven't designed because it's something that's being, being done as part of the home construction out there. It is a low spot on the site. It's just the foundation drain to, to discharge the runoff, the, the groundwater for these three lots here.
Well, if you're bringing it to the surface, does it then need to, you're not bringing?
Well, the, the groundwater will find its natural place where it seeps through the, the ground.
Yep.
And it, the topography generally drains in this direction and it drops off considerably to the, to the back of lot three there. So it's like any other home construction that has a foundation drain that discharges to the surface eventually.
I guess my question is how do? So you're saying, I guess we need to know that you're not increasing runoff off-site. So if you're discharging it to a low spot in here, how do we know? I guess we don't know how much water is going in there or where that wa, you know, is it going to grow? Is it going to leave the site, I guess, an increased runoff, you know what I'm saying, after?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's, it's strictly groundwater only. And it's really based upon the seasonal groundwater levels. It's just going to be a drip. This isn't going to be anything like, like a rainfall event discharged from a culvert. It's nothing like that. It's like a typical foundation drain that you see on most single-family lots in Maine. Maine tends to have higher bedrock, seasonal high groundwater. So this is a very common practice to alleviate groundwater conditions around a full basement. And it's really just the, the runoff from three homes in this case.
Right, well, I guess perhaps it's just our unfamiliarity with foundation drains and how much water they produce. When you discharge it at a kind of a, undisclosed, but it's not labeled on the plan and we don't really know what, is there any? Spreader or anything that keeps water from, we don't know what kind of flow is coming out of there, I guess is my point. So will it cause erosion when it comes out? Is there anything like, what's the, you know, that's our concern, I guess.
Yeah, it's really just a, a drip as compared to runoff from like a rainfall event. We can, we can add a riprap outlet apron, but it's, 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 it'd be hard for me to predict the exact amount. It's, there's no real science to it, like, like a stormwater management would outline.
Okay.
It's, it's really dependent on the, the runoff, the groundwater characteristics. And usually there's only flow right after a rainfall event. Where you might notice flow coming out of it, but for the most part, beyond a rainfall event, it's really just a drip, if even anything.
Do we, we don't have any comments from the town engineer yet on this, Brittany?
He had looked at it and said, you know, the only way to do this would be to do a revision. He didn't really have any real concerns because like Craig was saying, it's a foundation drain. I can get something more from him in writing.
I guess because I don't know how that works typically and we're used to seeing stormwater and discharges. Like I don't know that we, maybe we don't usually see foundation drain information.
We don't.
Typically with a subdivision, the foundation drains are not even detailed out because the flow attributed to them are, it's very minor. That's why we typically only look at the surface runoff, the stormwater management report only addresses surface runoff. It doesn't even address foundation drains because it's very minimal, minimal flow. So in this case, it, it's not something that's typically addressed in a stormwater management report.
Okay. Maybe just, just a quick note from him telling us that, just so we have something to go off of.
It's something that's being constructed in the field now. Chinburg's looking, looking to wrap this up and their, their lawyers looking to, we're starting to sell off lots and to get this foundation drain in so that.
Well, they're still, yeah, we, we can't approve it tonight anyway, so we got to do a public hearing. So there'll be time to get a letter from Chris just to make us feel comfortable that we know what we're talking about. Do you have any other questions?
I just want to understand what, what it physically looks like. So a foundation drain is what, pipes around, say in the ground around a foundation that needs all?
French drain sort of thing?
It's usually laid around the, at the bottom of the found, the full foundation. And it's usually a four-inch pipe that extends around the entire perimeter of the foundation. And then, so that picks up all of the groundwater so that it doesn't seep through the foundation wall and cause flooding in the basement. So it just alleviates the pressure on the foundation walls and provides a place for the seasonal high groundwater table, the, the groundwater to discharge, to relieve the pressure on the foundation.
And so I, I, I haven't been out, so I don't know what order you're working on the lots. Are those the first lots that you're beginning to develop? I, I guess my question is if you bump into this with some of the other lots?
Yeah, so the other lots have, we, there, there's a place for, to discharge that foundation drain. For those three particular lots, there is no place because those are, are on the lower side of the site. But on these lots here, there is a spot where you can discharge that foundation drain. So all the lots will have foundation drains, just in that particular case of lots one through three, because those are the lower-lying lots. And we don't want to build up the lots, the five or six feet that it would be needed to construct that foundation drain pipe. So we're just trying to tie it into a common foundation header pipe. Otherwise, we would, we could avoid coming back to the planning board if Chinburg had chose to raise those lots up six feet. But that's a considerable expense. So the easier approach here is to go through the process to add an easement along the back to construct one common foundation header pipe with one common outlet. So we're really not adding runoff here because it would have been a situation that probably would have happened during the construction of the lots anyway. It's very common for lots in Maine to have foundation drain pipes.
How far down does it hit water?
It's about, it's about two to three feet, some even shallow and a couple, more shallow and a couple spots.
And that's in, in drought conditions?
Well, this has been, they've started the roadway construction a while ago and during the, during the wet season too. So it was something that they've noticed that they've been working through.
Good for me to kind of understand the big picture here, all right. So I, my, my share Chris's concern, we need to make sure that it's not going off-site and it's held on-site because there are butters. And it's just like being nice and not push your water off into somebody else's yard regardless. So that's just my concern is the same as Chris's. We have a, a plan to keep it on-site, no matter how much, I mean, if you're getting that much and it's drought, what are you going to have in a rainy season? So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
The reason you're here.
Sorry.
Is the reason you're here is because you want to do, because you need a, a easement?
Yes, the reason why I'm here is because.
Because otherwise this would just be a, a foundation drain. Except lot one has no place to put, the water is taking out and lot two has no place to put it. So you're taking it all to lot three, is that what you're saying? So I agree with, with what Chris said earlier. How much water are we talking about? I mean, are you going to create a pond here on lot three?
No, there is no pond. The alternate, we're not, we're not creating runoff here. The, the groundwater naturally seeps through the ground in that general vicinity, so the.
Right, I understand that, but. We're taking a lot of fa, you, your scientific term was it's a drip. Well, I'm not sure a drip is really a scientific term. I think, I'd like to know how much water are we talking about? And what's it going to look like when it ends up on lot three?
I think we just need to get a.
If anything, and maybe it's nothing, but I'd like, we'd like to know that, I think.
Yeah. We just need to get a sign off from the town engineer.
That's, yeah, that's what we need.
Yep.
So, okay. That's all I.
Okay. So I guess we're going to leave it to Chris. If he's okay with this, like I don't know that we, if there's no calculations to be made or any other details to be shown, then I guess we're all set. But I'll set a public hearing date, but I don't.
If he's not all set, we'll revisit.
Yeah, we have to revisit.
Okay.
So as long as the town engineer is okay with this and the detail, because I don't know.
I mean, I have a foundation drain at my house, it's maybe this big around and I've very rarely if ever seen water come out of it, which is good, that means my basement's dry.
Yep, yep, it's fine, I just.
But you're not sending it to somebody else's property either?
Uh, no, that is true.
Okay, so we'll schedule a public, is there still room on the twenty-second?
Yes.
We'll schedule a public hearing for the twenty-second of August. And the process for this minor amendment is at that public hear, after that public hearing.
So it's final and everything, it all gets approved at that one? You treat it like it's a minor subdivision, so you don't have an additional final meeting? So I just need a motion that the application is complete. For preliminary review or do not feel comfortable doing that?
We can, with a condition that the town engineer signs off.
Perfect.
The town engineer signs off on the information provided.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the preliminary review for subdivision revision for the Homes at West Meadow. Chinburg Development LLC, Mockingbird Lane, we have a name now. Lot thirty, lots one sixty-one to sixty-seven. For drainage easement be complete.
With the condition that.
With the condition that the town engineer's concerns are addressed.
The town engineer signs off on the information provided.
Signed off on it, okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll call the rule, Janice Vance?
Aye.
Janice votes aye, Richard?
Aye.
Richard Smith votes aye, Chris McClinsey votes aye. We have a complete preliminary plan.
Thank you.
With conditions, thank you.
Craig, Chris is out this week, so we'll, I'll grab him next week.
All right. We'll review the minutes for July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Anybody have any corrections to make?
I just had one question on page two and it's maybe just the way it was worded. One, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down to me, Jay Vance has a question about the Gooch Avenue access and Chief Farrell affirmed that I think it would be, it's not. The access, I think here, I was confused about because I know we talked about Gooch Avenue for the emergency access and Beach Avenue for their everyday access. So I just wanted to ensure that we understand what we're talking about here. I don't know if we have to belabor it, but how does it read to you guys?
I had the same question.
Did you?
So I think if after, in that second sentence, if you said Gooch Avenue would be used for emergency access.
Yeah.
Does that fix that sentence?
If that's what it was meant.
Well, ask Janice.
We just put the word emergency in in front of access, you think that would work?
Well, it's Glenn Farrell answering the question. So he was saying that the Gooch Ave would be used for emergency access as it would be less intrusive on neighbors and the access would be, take place on the property owned by family members. Or, and the access.
The primary access.
Primary access, yeah.
So add emergency access, emergency before the first access word on there in that sentence, you following? That Gooch Ave would be used for emergency access. And then further down that. And then, further down that sentence, and the beach, uh, sorry. And the primary access would take place on property owned by family members.
Off-beach, does that clarify that a little bit better?
Off-beach avenue, in brackets.
Thank you, that's all, anything I saw through the whole document. Good job, Jim.
Anything else for you, Richard? Okay, I'll take your motion. A motion?
Yes, quick. Uh, I'd make a motion to approve the Town of Kennebunk Planning Board meeting minutes for July eleventh, two thousand and two-two, as corrected.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Our meeting minutes are approved. Other business. I'm gonna, go ahead, you can talk about it.
Okay, so, the Climate Action Plan Task Force, in March, the Town of Kennebunk, along with Kennebunk Port, Kittering, and Bitterford, jointly applied to the Southern Maine Planning Development Commission as a four-community regional cohort to collectively seek shared resources and experience in developing community-specific climate action plan. The funding was accepted, um, so the Select Board created this task force at their last meeting on July twelfth. They're looking for a representative from the planning board for this task force. So I'm not sure if we'd want to, there's not the full board here tonight, if you want to do this tonight, I'm not sure who is interested, if we want to wait till the next meeting. Our next meeting will be before the Select Board's next meeting, so I don't think it's an issue if we were to wait, or if we wanted to do that tonight.
I am inclined to table it until our next meeting. I do have a question about quorum at our next meeting. Just to check, so I think we, is Ted, or was, maybe it was this meeting he was gonna miss?
Ted was missing this meeting, yeah.
Just missed the meeting, okay. All right, then, I, I won't be at the next meeting.
Okay.
I will be absent. And if nobody else volunteers for the task force, I can do it, but, uh... I will, I will, I'll table it, but it wouldn't, if nobody else wants to do it, I'll, I'll do it, but if you want to do it, then that's fine, too, or, or wait to see what the discussion is at the next meeting, so. Yep, exactly, so I'll let you guys, we'll table this until our meeting on August eighth. I also wanted to, I got an email, which I'll probably, you may have gotten it as well, that Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission is having a virtual workshop on August ninth about coastal resiliency and economic impacts, I got the email today.
I was not in on Friday, I haven't fully finished going through all my emails.
It's, it's a virtual workshop on Tuesday from five to six P M. about, uh, so if you could forward that to the board, to see if people, I'll be on the road, but I might be able to join in for, to watch this. But anyway, they've done some work, there's some information in the email, and we'll just, we'll send that on to you guys. Yep, August ninth, five to six P M. Anything else, Brittany, that you have for us?
No, I'll just have to double-check availability for the meeting on the eighth, because we have the zoning proposal changes to get to the Select Board for that meeting, so.
Anything else to bring up? Who what?
I have a medical procedure that's...
The eighth?
As long as I'm feeling fine, I'll be here.
Okay. All right, so we'll check for quorum for the eighth. Anything else that you have, Richard, for us?
Nope.
All right.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, we are adjourned.